Hello, it's Brian Barrett signing in. Hello, hello Jacob, it's Brian. It's Brian Barrett here.
Hi Brian, it's me Vicki on Zoom.
Hey, how are you? How are you doing?
Good, good, you?
Good.
Hey Brian, we can hear you too, this is Julia on the micro. We're just waiting on Ron to get started.
Okay, I'll be standing by. Am I still involved here? Hello?
Hi Brian, we're here. I just was grabbing some water from my office, but I will call order in just a second.
No, no, I was just sitting there saying, "Oh my God." Not again. Okay, thank you Jacob.
Good afternoon, it's 4:09 PM, this is the regular meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Before I call order, I'd ask that you join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Members present include Vice Chair Robert Lovenheim, Supervisor Brian Barrett, who is here with us on Zoom, myself, Chairman Jacob Pride, our Office Manager Julia Heilica, our Engineer John Tressler, and our supervisor Julia Carasack. The first order of business is the January 26th, 2022 minutes from the regular business meeting. Has everyone had the opportunity to go over that?
Yes.
Okay. Would be in order to make a motion to approve those minutes. Do I hear such a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Mr. Lovenheim, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrett, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do not have any unfinished business from prior meetings? And our public hearing is at 6:00 PM? We do not have any plans to act on either. However, we do have Marv Walton here from the Monterey County Land Bank to do a presentation for us. So, Marv, if you need any technical assistance, let me know. Your PowerPoint should open up. You're assigned for the benefit of those on Zoom. You should be able to view it, and this is archived. Can I continue there? And want to double tap on your presentation again? Just in case it might matter. Yeah. Do you want to click on that window? Do you want to tap on the window where you're going above that? Yeah. Sometimes it does that. All right. Let me see. Sometimes it can be.
It's magic, sir.
Yeah, sometimes it's been a case.
Okay. How do I get it back?
Yeah, it's flash. That's okay.
And all right, so how are these to move the slides? Okay.
Yeah. I'm thinking about what we started building some fish.
Well, hello, everybody. As Jacob had mentioned, my name is Marv Walton, and I am the Administrator of the Monterey County Land Bank. When I introduce myself and my position, usually the first question is, what is a land bank? So that is why I'm here, to get the word out to municipalities as to what the land bank is and what we can do for you. So land banks are public bodies established by an enalen legislation by the Commonwealth in 2012, which authorized the formation of land banks. Right now, there are 25 land banks in Pennsylvania. Most of them are county. And land banks deal with problem properties, blighted, abandoned properties, properties that, and just to give you a little background on my experience, I have about 20-plus years in municipal government. I did zoning and codes in Stroud Township and also in the borough of Stratford. And the gap in between there, I was in the private sector working for a civil engineering firm. So I'm very familiar with properties. These are the properties that you drive by on a daily basis and you say, boy, I wish somebody could do something about that. Or you get people in here saying, when do you want to do something about this property? Well, we can help. So three, blighted properties are tough. They typically have liens against them, they're delinquent in taxes, and they have title issues. A lot of times, you don't even know who owns this property. I don't know. I can tell you what the assessment, what the assessor's office tells me, but that does that. That always doesn't tell the tale. So land banks can, we can negotiate, and this is all comes back from the enabling legislation that gives the land banks the power to do these things. We can negotiate liens, exceed the fair market value of the property. So if, you know, it has more debt than what it's worth, it's underwater, nobody wants to touch it. You know, we can negotiate waiving those liens. A lot of times, if the tax sale goes to the upset and judicial sales speculators will come in, they'll try to get a property on the cheap. Doesn't solve the problem, especially if they're from out of the area. They'll buy the property, but they'll just hold it, and they're just as tough to get in contact with as the original owner. So again, by the powers given by the enabling legislation, land banks have the authority to establish priority bid power at judicial tax sales. Things we can negotiate directly with the Tax Claim Bureau prior to the sale and come to an agreement, whereas we are going to buy, we are going to purchase X, Y, and Z property, properties at the sale. And when the sale comes down, it's announced the land bank is acquiring these properties, and they're not up for public auction. We have control of them, and instead of them just going to speculators who may just let the property sit for as long as they will. And again, if they, if they're not receiving any benefit from it, I'll just let it go to tax sale. And we can also petition for expedited quiet title action. So once we dispose of a property, it will have pre-enchanted type. The Monterey County Land Bank was established in 2019. Back in 2018, Act 33 of the Commonwealth amended the Land Bank Act to allow redevelopment authorities to act as the land bank. Prior to that, the land banks had to be their own entity. They could not be part of the redevelopment authority. I think what happened is there were some pressure at the state level that it would get easier if they were part of the redevelopment authority and not their separate entity. So that's the way Monterey County decided to tackle it. And in 2019, Monterey County passed an ordinance that designated the redevelopment authority of Monterey County as the land bank. What we would like, eventually, what we would like to do is enter into intergovernmental agreements with the taxing authorities of the county. Taxing authorities being the municipality, county, and the school districts. We had, the contents of the intergovernmental agreement would set forth that what the duties of the land bank would be, we would pursue the acquisition of blighted properties and take the steps necessary to return them to productive use. In return, the taxing authorities agree to share 50/50 the real estate taxes with the land bank after properties are returned to the tax rolls for a period of five years. Once that five years is up, then they're 100% back to taxing authorities. We may also ask the taxing authorities to waive any liens that may be on the property. We would be asking for an annual participation fee. The land bank funding for us is always an issue. Right now, we're working solely on grants. So just a steady stream of revenue so that we can do our duties would help. Where applicable, I don't think this would pertain to Smithfield as much as some of the municipalities in town, whereas the municipalities would also agree to cut the grass, shovel the snow on the sidewalks during the time that the land bank owns the property. And our strongest partnership structure occurs when all three land banks approve the IGA and started to pursue a little history on the land bank. Again, what happened between 2019 and now 2022, COVID. The land bank just started to get its legs together under it, and COVID hit. There was some negotiation with Mount Pocono Borough and the Mountain School District on an intergovernmental agreement. But then COVID pretty much ground everything to halt. And actually, in 2020, the Board of Directors of the Redevelopment Authority understood the negative impact that COVID has had on municipal budgets. So they agreed in 2020 that the pursuit of the intergovernmental agreement process may be paused for two years to try to get, allow municipalities to get their budgets back in order. We will revisit approaching municipalities to determine their interest in participating in the governmental agreement process. And you may ask, if we don't have a governmental agreement with you, does that preclude us from doing anything in your municipality? And the answer to that is no. We will still, we will always pursue properties that are referred to us through the municipality. We're not, we just, we would like to, at some point, we would like to formalize the process, but that's down the road. So we, I agree, and the municipality and the school district, share objectives, which is increase the tax base. These properties that are blighted, they're not getting our tax revenue now. They're being billed for taxes, but they're not getting paid, which is why they end up on the tax sale. So again, you know, our success is proportioned to funding level. We're in a pretty good position right now. We've been successful with some grants. The County Act 137 for housing grant, and also the State Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency Fair Funding. We've been pretty successful with that, but our hands are tied somewhat with that in that it doubles back to affordable housing. We're not looking, we're not, we're not the first stop, I guess you can say. Or what we would, we're the last stop. If there's a problem property that's in the municipality, we can't just refer it to us and say, you take care of this. What would happen is that basically, once all municipal enforcement actions have been exhausted and that there have not, without success, at that point, then you turn to us and say, can you help? And chances are, yeah, we probably can.
Marv, can you give us some examples of projects within the county that work this way that you've done?
Yes, I, I have some photos. So these are projects outside of the county. I can just zip through these quickly to give you an example of what land banks have done in other jurisdictions. Tuscon County, I'm sorry, Tuscon Township, Dawson County. Fire damage, owners walked away. That's what it ended up. I don't know if I'm going too fast forward. So Westmoreland County, a little more well-established land bank. They acquired an old medical center at judicial tax sale. They're saving up $10,000 on a multi-million dollar property. They demoed it through a private developer, $3.1 million. A little closer home, Schoolco County. Schoolco County land bank's pretty busy. Those old towns are in rough shape. These land banks, they serve multi, multiple jurisdictions in the Grant-Milksborough area.
Have you ever been involved in any projects that became low-income housing?
Not yet. Again, we're just getting, we just acquired our first property in September.
So if you hit the red circle in the left corner, you can close that.
Okay.
I really liked your presentation.
Okay, so this is in Monterey County. This is a property that was referred to the land bank by Jackson Township. Jackson Township undertook enforcement action, had exhausted all remedies. Owners pretty much won. It was on the upset sale tax list in September. Did not sell. It will appear on the judicial sale tax list, you know, the sprint.
Judicial is where everything is wiped out.
Yes, yes. Those who don't understand the difference. An upset tax sale, it's sold for delinquent taxes, but any and all liens and the like are still attached. At the judicial sale, if it doesn't sell, the upset sale goes on to the judicial sale. At that point, then, any liens and the like are wiped out. So we would prefer to pursue properties at judicial sale. They, the authority pursued this one at the upset sale. Again, it's in, I'm sorry. This did not sell at the upset sale. So we, the authorities, the authorities board authorized us to pursue this property at the spring upset, or the spring judicial sale, whenever that is going to be. The Tax Claim Bureau has not announced a date for this judicial sale. Given that, you know, that, our intent, our intent is this, actually, the adjoining property owner, this is in Act 319, and it also joins, I think, Conservation District property. It's up off of, if you're familiar with the Jackson Township area, it's up off of Croucher Road. So the adjoining property owner, who I believe, township is well familiar with, has expressed an interest in acquiring. So in addition to redevelopment, we can, the land bank can also sell properties as what we call side lots. Side lot is, what we would do is, once we acquire it, we'll use the county demolition funds, which you're familiar with, to demo it and then sell it to the adjoining property owner, who will then do a lot combination and combine it to his property. So that's one example in Monterey County. Okay, this is the property that the authority of the land bank did acquire. It's in Coobah Township on Maple Street, just outside the villages of Tobie Hannah, powered by the Mill Pond. Where that is, again, this was referred to us by Coobah Township. They exhausted all enforcement remedies. Took the owner to court, several notices of violation, private civil complaint. It was not accepted. This is, this is how it is. So the authority acquired this property at the upset sale. They just re-prepared an application for demolition, which was just approved by the county commissioners at their meeting last Wednesday. And again, what we were going, what we were going to do with this And, again, what we were going, what we were going to do with this is demo it, and again, the adjoining property owner has expressed an interest in acquiring it. So, we will be demoing it and then selling it to the adjoining property owner as a, as a, as a side lot. There are some zoning issues with this property that would make it very difficult to redevelop. So, again, we're tearing the blighted condition, and trying to pay, we'll, we'll generate some tax revenue as, as when the investment office finds out that the new owner is attaching it to this property. And a third, a third example that I have right now, this is in the borough of Schalford, on Scott Street, then referred to us by, by the borough. They have a long history of ineffective enforcement actions on, on this property. We are currently, I, and we have an, currently we have an agreement of sale on this property, typically not how we would acquire properties, but we have an agreement of sale on this property, our contingency period is going to expire sometime in April. We've done everything that, we've done all our investigations, and our intent is to go ahead with the sale. What we will do is, this is, this is, this house is salvageable, so what we will be doing is, we will be acquiring it and, we're playing proposals from developers to spare it, and then turn around and sell it. We'll be, we'll be selling it to the developer for a dollar, and based on the funding, to acquire it, again, fair and affordable housing, the ultimate owner of this property, the average median income can't exceed the average median income of the county at the time the grant was let, which was in 2019. So, it would be 79,000, the average median income of the ultimate owner of this, of this cannot exceed $79,100. So, you know, based on that, developer can't, cannot sell this for more than $350,000, which is why we're selling it to them for a dollar. So, that, that's the third example I have right now in the county. Again, our goal is to get this property taken care of and to get it back into some productive use. In closing, and I, you know, I may have sent these out earlier this year, this is the form that we use for usable referrals, for you guys. I, I, I think, I think this is what may have.
I think we've got it mailed a couple of times, and then emailed too.
I guess it may have generated your interest in having me come here today, so I just wanted to show you. This is, this is our property referral form. Again, the property has to meet, meet the criteria for blight. Some of these things, you know, are, not preclude us from pursuing the property, it's just the more, the more information, the better. Is it that's been open for more than three years? If it's not, that, that doesn't mean we won't pursue it, it just means that we may be able to acquire it easier, easier, if it's on a, one of the tax sale list. Again, number six is, did you cheat? You know, what actions have the, has the municipality taken? I've gotten a couple of referrals where the municipality's indicated they haven't done anything. So, at that, we, we, at that point, we would have to just tell them, "Sorry, you know, I'm sorry, but go through your enforcement actions, if they're ineffective, then come back and see us." So.
Thank you very much.
Want to have any?
We'll have to drive around and see what blighted properties it'd be.
And then, sometimes, that's what, that's what it takes. I, I, I drive around now, and there's a place out in Toyota, on the two, two-lane, right, house is right there, it's like half the roost gone, and I fall down, and I check the owner, and I'm like, geez, it's not up for tax sale, I don't know what we're going to do. But, the life of a code enforcement, I'm on vacation, I would drive around, and I'm like, boy, that's probably going to, so, great.
I just have one question, Mr.
Yeah.
On the exhaustion of remedies number, which was maybe six or seven.
On this, on this form?
On that form.
Yeah.
What you have, there it is. Does the municipality have to do all of that, or some of it, or is it the, on a case-by-case basis?
I'd say it's on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
If, we just want to, we want to see where the municipality has taken some type of enforcement action. Again, not, not that it's, you got a, you got a problem property, and it's like land bank, here you go.
Right, pass it over, yeah. Okay, that's what I kind of thought, I just wanted to check. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I've got some questions online. You mentioned, in the future, eventually considering an annual occupancy.
Yeah.
Do you have any numbers for what that would be required yet?
The, the original seen contemplated by the board was a thousand dollars. I think we've gotten some feedback that that may have been a little steep, so that's, that's still under, that's still under consideration.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
I will, all right. Oh, good one. In addition to, and this is just on the side, as, as you may know, because you did an application through us, in addition to the land bank duties, the, the land bank is also charged with administering the county's Act 152 demolition program. So, if you had, you had done one application through us, and actually, we were just waiting to next week that they, that you get the, the request of reimbursement.
Thank you very much.
And I understand you're going to be submitting phase two for the, for the house, so, I can't remember how big that place was, though I was out there, I'll please.
Yeah. House in that day in the winter. Our next order of business is the consideration of the adoption of the 2022 budget. This had been reopened per discussion with the township auditors at their meeting in January, where we revised the line item for salaries of part-time elected officials by $5,000 to make sure there was no overage. Based on our discussion with the auditors and what we've done thus far, it was advertised per the Second Class Township Code, and we also placed it on our website, and it was available for public inspection. That said, we have it before us, and today would be our, our deadline essentially to approve it. There is no other changes. That said, a motion would be in order to adopt the revised budget.
Who made the motion to adopt the revised budget?
Motion by Mr. Leavenheim, do I hear a second?
Second, here.
Second by Mr. Barrett, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, excellent. Further, Julia, do you want to talk about the American Rescue Plan Act funds, possible uses, given the various webinars we've all been in over the last couple of weeks? I know we have some ideas, but just, so the public understands what leeway we now have.
Sure. The final rule from Treasury was released on January either sixth or seventh of this year. The thing that they added was a standard deduction of $10 million. What that means is that municipalities, who are considered a non-entitlement unit, are no longer to require, go through everything that we've done, and determine exactly what our loss was. Part of that reason was because anyone that received grants during that timeframe, that money was, it was relegated to other projects, so municipalities couldn't necessarily show exactly what they were missing. That being said, this $10 million standard deduction allows the township to take the $10 million standard deductions the board would like, and then use the ARPA funds to cover any sort of general government expenses. After having sat with Zelenkovsky Axolotl, their recommendation currently to streamline this process as much as possible, is take the funds that the township receives, take the $10 million standard loss, and then use those funds that we have through ARPA to pay for payroll, which is a general government expense. Once that has been made, the township then has the ARPA money quote-unquote "free," because it's used to cover payroll for the time, and it's pretty much how you choose to do it.
Sounds like what we need at this point is a wish list of what we'd like to do.
Right, and that is part of the reason it's running agenda.
Julia Bryan here. I think it would suggest that we, we invite VNAN to sit with us personally, and they come with a wealth of experience, they're statewide, they'll, they'll talk about good practices, what, what seems to work, what are innovative ideas, what are the most efficient ideas, and the best ways to spend our money. We'll have our own ideas that will run by them, but I don't think it would hurt to have and sit with them for a couple of hours. As I said, it was suggested, and I think we should really consider doing that, before we go too further, too much further.
Well, I think at some point, we will be able to come do a presentation similar to what Marv did for the, the land bank. I think it's, it's good on best practices, but I think this is also just to discuss generally the, the line of thinking. I, I think the only thing that we know of is, both of you are very interested in the, the radar speed sign that collects data, but we've also talked about radios for the fire companies and EMS. So, I think that's just something we should keep in the back of our mind. I know that we, we got the letter from the sewer authority, but they've asked to speak to us on the 23rd, so we can keep that in, or, sorry, March, the March meeting, not, not the, not the February meeting.
Russ is available for that, because he wasn't for this.
Right, right, that, that's why. So, I think that's, that's something we should keep in the back of our mind as we get in touch with Zelenkovsky Axolotl as well.
Yeah, and, and again, Jacob, what I was thinking is, because of their worth, their wealth of knowledge, they're statewide, they're going to run across some very efficient, and really well put together areas that we could apply it for, that we probably, as amateurs, would not even have thought of. Just, I don't think of a presentation, actually, just sitting down, rolling up our sleeves and talking to each other. Hey, what's the, what's the best one you found? What's the worst you've found? That, that kind of stuff. Guys are really knowledgeable, I think that would be a, a, a good session to have.
That sounds good, I, I think that can't hurt. We can get in touch with Jeff, wife, our.
Brian, I know that you reached out to Jeff, asking for me maybe two weeks ago, have you heard back from him?
Yeah, what happened was, I, I reached out, I really reached out to, to just us internally initially, and I was just thinking, just out loud, what, hey, our fire companies, what do they need, our, our emergency services? How about us? Do we need another truck? Do we need another employee? We've got, we've got to, to realize that the, the roads in, in Monroe County are just horrendous, and, and, and really, we've got to be very careful. It's a lot of money, as you know, I guess it's about $800,000 now.
Correct.
But, there's, there's some, some requests for about a quarter of that right off the get-go. So.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking, these, they really have their gear together, they know what they're doing, they've got experience, they're statewide, and I just thought that would be, as opposed to a, a presentation such as MERS.
Should, and hurts.
Just done, yep. And he, and he indicated that he'd be more than happy to do it, so we should keep that in mind too, Jacob.
Yeah, no, that sounds good.
That's a question.
All right, yes, Mr. Barrett?
I have a concern, the public being lost because of Mr. Leavenheim's spouse's experience, I really don't trust all that money at hand, I really like to be informed of.
Certainly, it'll all be discussed at, at public meetings, no one supervisor has any direction over the expenses. They would, of course, all be voted on and listed on an agenda.
Thank you.
Anything else before we move on to Marshall Falls Phase Two?
I have one other thing.
Sure.
Just a reminder to the board, you wanted to consider doing a room update for microphones, now that we are partially masked and just in general.
Right.
Getting microphones for each spot, getting speakers outside, that is one other thing that you consider for the ARPA.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's one thing I have, I have to get in touch with the one council member from Delaware Water Gap, who did something pretty interesting with their setup.
Did MST do something?
Yes, they got a courtroom-style television, so either presentations, but there's all sorts of cameras now, like the ones that are used at ESU that, you know, move toward the direction of whoever speaks.
Yeah, that's great.
Kind of just hangs down like the projector, but something that we can definitely get into. That said, the next item is our Marshall Falls Phase Two statewide LSA grant application. This is something we learned about at COG, that the gaming funds, because they are now digital, I'm sure everybody's seen the commercials for how to make bets on your phone and whatnot. So, all of that money goes into a statewide LSA pool, which is different than the local share account that comes from Mount Airy and other casinos in our region that benefits the LSA grant, the state representatives and state senators are involved with. Julia, do you want to talk about your discussion with Barry Isaac regarding the Marshall Falls Phase Two?
Sure.
In relation to what we've already got?
So, Marshall Falls Phase Two, the entire phase is looking like it's going to process approximately $550,000 to complete. We have already secured $100,000 from another grant that was announced very recently, and Mary from Barry Isaac contacted me, asking if the board would be interested for, to apply for the Marshall Falls Phase Two for the statewide application. She is hesitant to try any new projects or anything that we need to put much time into, because Monroe County already has an LSA fund, and pretty much all parties, because this is a brand-new grant, we don't know how competitive we'll be here in Monroe County compared to other areas in the state that do not already have an established LSA fund. So, her recommendation was to go with Phase Two, because we're still underfunded for it, and because we've already applied through DCEV, we basically have the application complete, it would be minimal work. We do have a resolution and a fund commitment letter in front of you at this time.
And it's matched by the $100,000 that we already have.
Correct. This is not asking the township to contribute any new funds to this project, because the engineering for this project will be less than 10%, it falls within the LSA guidelines, we can use the funding that we've already received.
Great. Any questions from the board? Said, a motion would be in order to approve Resolution 497, which would apply for the grant, and authorize the township to sign on to the commitment letter, which commits our funding.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 497. 497.
Motion to approve 497 by Mr. Leavenheim, do I hear a second? All second the motion, second by myself. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, subsequently, we need a motion to authorize us to sign the letter, just that part's not covered in the resolution. So, do I hear such a motion?
I'll make the motion to sign the letter, Resolution 497.
Motion by Mr. Leavenheim, do I hear a second?
Yeah, the second here.
Second by Mr. Barrett, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent.
Brian, what did you say?
Aye.
Thank you.
And so, the next item up is considering the radios for the fire company. So, this is not a financial. So this is not a financial commitment, this is based on communication received from COG. The county commissioners are at least interested in funding the upgrade to the P25 qualified radios, which meet the new digital standards, they're interested in funding a third of it and splitting the remaining two thirds with a third by the municipality in question. In some townships, it's just the municipality, just a single municipality served by a fire company. In others, like Smithfield, where it's served by three, so that would be split by the municipalities that are served in proportion to the number of homes and some other mechanism. And the other third would be borne by the fire companies themselves. Countywide, the cost is estimated to be three point two million, and a third overall, which the county would bear is at one point one million, and the respective municipalities and fire companies would then divide the rest per the guidelines I just set. Given that the county has not yet committed to this, they would like to see commitment from the municipalities or interest from the municipalities to see if this project is feasible. I will say, based on our discussions at the Marshals Creek Fire Company Supervisor Subcommittee a couple of weeks ago, they said there's unprecedented cooperation among the eighteen fire chiefs, and they've agreed on a set standard. So I would like it if Smithfield Township would commit to our interest in the project, but not commit to any sort of figures. We had talked about this in January, but now there's actually some movement, and probably looking in the next couple of weeks of seeing the commissioners potentially take a vote on their commitment, which would allow everyone else to look at the same.
Yeah, are you looking for a motion, Jacob, there, I'd make it.
I would be, I'll consider that motion from...
Second.
Second, and Mr. Lovinheim, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 We will get that letter out to them shortly. The next item up is a change order, a third one, for the Wellness Park Phase Two. This is basically just an extension of time based on weather and some supply chain issues over the last several months. This extends their completion timeframe into June, if I'm correct.
Right.
June thirtieth of twenty twenty.
No charge, right?
Correct, there is no charge, it is just an extension of time.
And no increase in the cost, I saw that that also was part of it.
Correct.
Yep.
That said, anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Brian.
No, no, I was just saying, if a motion's ready to be made, I'd make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Barrett, and second by Mr. Lovinheim, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent, the next item up is authorizing the advertisement for spring cleanup. I don't know if I have an exact copy of that in front of me.
I have one here, if you care if you want it.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, just so I can announce the dates, we'll get it on our website. But this is boilerplate put together by Lois for our spring cleanup. It's set to be May eleventh through May fifteenth, and this basically is the preliminary step so we can get bids to see whom is going to haul away the waste after the event is completed. That said, does anyone have any questions?
Just a comment again, Jacob, I think doing it at this early stage really gives us an advantage as far as the bidding process goes and commitments from those who offers those services. So, yes.
Absolutely. All right, do I hear a motion that we authorize the advertisement for spring cleanup?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett, second by Mr. Lovinheim, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next is consideration of closing the First Baptist Church escrow. They had filed land development plans years back to develop a new church over on, uh, over by Spring Lake. And they have, their plans have since expired, as have any permits they have. So at this point, the township holding on to the two thousand dollars left over is actually disadvantageous to them, because not only do they have to restart the process again because of the expirations, but they also could earn interest. We already had returned some one hundred fifty thousand back to them several years back when things really fell through, but they said it will be at least a couple of years before they consider doing anything with this again. So, it doesn't make sense for us to hold on to two thousand dollars.
They just created that property, why couldn't you use that money to make it restored?
Uh, that would not be, Ron, to my understanding, that's not something that's covered in the development agreement. The escrow money is only to be held to cover legal and engineering fees for our inspections, correct?
Well, in fact, the legal fees sometimes is questionable. This came up with the Shawnee comments matter.
Right.
Where the improvements agreements are speaking only to engineering fees, and I think we may need to add the legal fees. I mean, generally, we have not, because there's always been an escrow that was paid to pay the legal fees, et cetera.
Right.
So I don't know, I think that's a great idea, but I don't know if that flies under the agreement. And if they want to challenge it, let's say they do, the township's going to burn up more than two grand fighting about it, so.
Yeah.
Practically, it may be better just to return it, and then on the next go around, make sure that they do what they need to do.
Right, yeah, it's hard to do that, that's correct. That said, do we hear a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to return the First Baptist Church escrow remaining funds.
Motion by Mr. Lovinheim, do I hear a second? Second here. Second by Mr. Barrett, any pressing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is Green Light Go.
Brian, what was your?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Uh, next item is Green Light Go Agreement. This is something that we should really discuss and finalize at our next meeting, just so we can satisfy the engineer on the project, Mr. May. But, um...
I only caution you that I think Middle Smithfield has already made a resolution.
I believe that they have done so.
Yeah, I just would not like us to be the ones who are dragging our feet on this. The last time we postponed this, we lost the state funding for two years, and I'd just love to get going.
Um, not to throw our solicitor under the bus.
Oh, you can't, because I was going to say that this has been on my desk for at least a month or so, but just not been able to get to it. Every day, there's another emergency, another priority, you have to do this first. I would think you could approve the agreement, on condition that I will review it tomorrow, which I promise.
Okay.
And assuming there are no issues with my approval, then you don't have to come back another day.
All right.
Shall we do that?
A motion to approve on condition that I will approve it.
Do I hear a motion to that, or something?
I'll make that motion, quoting what Mr. Perisak just said.
The record reflects, Mr. Lovinheim moved to tentatively approve this agreement pending the sole approval per tomorrow's review for Mr. Perisak. All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item up is the transfer of twenty six thousand dollars to our bond payment account. Julia, do you want to summarize that one for us?
Sure, um, we took a look over the accounts that we are using to currently pay our bond. Um, I believe we're going to be approximately two hundred. So as a way to slowly make sure that we are solvent, every year from now until the bond payment is paid off, we simply need to transfer twenty six thousand dollars from our general fund over to that account to make sure that at the end of the year, we have all of the money that we need. These figures might change a little bit, depending on interest and how the market runs with COVID, but this is generally what we need to do every year to make sure we're solvent.
Right, that said, does anyone have any questions? At this point, it would be in order to make a motion to transfer the twenty six thousand dollars to the bond payment account.
I'll motion that we do that comment, uh, yeah.
Question by Mr. Barrett, second by Mr. Barrett, any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, our next item up is the ratification of our bills. Uh, these are primarily the regular expenses, includes one payroll, certainly legal and engineering fees, but also some repairs to the bucket truck that we approved, our purchase of a couple of weeks back, and that's going to save us some money in the long run, which is great, and makes our insurance happy. Other than that, um, it's salt, it's insurance, and it is also some water testing, legal advertising, the repair of our superheat system that had some issues and insurance premiums. That said, does anyone have any questions on those? Oh, sorry, the grand total is of one hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. Fairly regular bill pack. Any questions? All right, do I hear a motion that we meet our obligations?
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Lovinheim, do I hear a second?
Second here.
Mr. Barrett, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, that is the extent of our regular business. We do have the other meeting at six o'clock, but seeing as there are individuals here, we won't entertain a public comment that is not related to agenda items that would have been during that. So, does anyone, Mr. Petruzzo?
Thank you very much, pleasure to be here. I don't think I've been here since Charlie Ballmose and Al Wilson were sitting up there. And it had to do with the Shawnee project. Very concerned about past and present projects before your board. And one's the Gateway project, and the other one's the development on Hollow Road. I've attended the school board meetings when it came to the tax incentive program, or TIP, for the Gateway. And during this project, every time you turn around, they're changing what they're doing. And I always have a saying, never believe what they say, just watch what they do. And I'd like to give you a couple past experiences that I've had. In the seventies, I attended Lehman Township Supervisor's meeting when they were in the process of approving Saw Creek Estates. A gentleman got up, that the size of this development is going to absolutely kill our school district. An illustrious developer got up, said, this isn't going to impact your school one bit. It's going to be second home and vacation homes. There's nine school buses back there now. Second one was Gateway project. They needed infrastructure improvement. The school district passed a motion to give them a tax incentive to fix the roadway for eleven million dollars. During the process, it came out many, many times, Shop Right wants to come there. Many of you know I own a restaurant, we've been in business seventy-six years. Many people come from all over the country and the world. Two people that decided to come to our restaurant were real estate people that seek out sites for Shop Right. Both of them, when I questioned them, had no interest ever in the Gateway project. And what I'm saying is, this project and these tax incentives were approved on bogus information. Who's going to end up paying for this? Taxpayers of our area. Now let's move to the Hollow Road development. I don't have any problem with people developing their property. I do have a problem with Hollow Road. State only owns eleven feet of Hollow Road. That road was laid out in seventeen fifty-one. The cartway was eleven feet. Through the years, they've expanded it, put more pavement, or put more pavement. Even if you go by what the state says, they own to the end of the pavement, they don't own where the signs are, they don't own the shoulders, and they don't own where the catch basins are. I don't hold the developer responsible, and I don't hold you people responsible. But, that project, without that road being improved, it's like putting five pounds of crap in a four pound bag. And that is not good for your residents. So, I would appreciate it if you might consider my comments, maybe consider backing out of that tax incentive program that you wrote and signed for the Gateway project, and maybe getting somebody to fix that road up before somebody else gets killed on it. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, when you talk about the road where people are going to kill, do you mean two oh nine, or do you mean?
Hollow Road.
Hollow, okay.
Hollow Road. Accidents all the time. And, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barrett.
I saw your picture, it's a hell of a town, it's not commercial anymore, it's now basically residential. What are we talking, nine hundred units? It's nine hundred kids, top of any school year.
We should probably talk about that.
It's on my gateway.
Anyway, top of the school district, eighteen thousand dollars a year to educate a child. I think that's below, low, really too low. They will get no tax revenue to offset those nine hundred kids that are going to get dumped there. Now, they're going to tell you some of its senior citizens, well, Mr. Lovinheim is a good example. You can have kids when you're old, but don't fall for that. And if you do any studying at all, it will ruin the, it's going to throw all the taxes back on us.
Well, they're saying that these nine, this will be suitable for families?
That's a number two bedroom, yeah.
I mean, I know it's not nine hundred, but I'll let you continue.
I'm just using nine hundred as a ballpark, but just think about it, and then doesn't Robert, don't you want to dump another two hundred and some down on four forty-seven?
Four forty-seven?
For Dr. Khan, I mean, didn't you make a deal with him?
Are you saying I made a deal with him?
Well, yes, you did.
If there's a deal to be made, it's the board that makes a deal with him, and the plan is to...
But you like to do things on the front, but anyway, just think about all those kids in the school district at eighteen thousand dollars a pop, and no income coming in.
So are you suggesting that we take discriminatory action against families? Because I think that's illegal, isn't it?
No, we're not taking discriminatory.
Well, if we're not allowing them?
No, you would, you would give them that tip on the wrong impression. You were told, oh, they were going to have stores, they were going to do this, they were going to do that, and you all tell them. You and I talked about it, we don't know it wasn't going to work. It can't, it just won't work. It's going to cost, it's going to cost us, my taxes went up this year. You just raised our taxes. Can you imagine what that's going to do to our taxes? And I hope, it doesn't pay taxes, we just don't have no idea.
Excuse me, excuse me. I may not pay real property taxes, but I'm still paying our income tax, I'm a taxpayer. I am not going to entertain...
Young man, go get a job, see what it is to make mortgage payments.
With all due respect, I've been employed, and I am employed, and I am educated. I'm not going to deal with your innuendo, and if you're going to continue with that, I'm going to invite you to leave.
To have more than you.
Ms. Barrett, we are not going, we are not going to engage in that type of behavior here.
I've got more to talk, I, you're not being discriminatory. All these people are rooting.
I don't think they do, but that's okay.
Let's go back to Gateway. Let's go back to Gateway, but it's just...
There is not nine hundred.
I understand it was two hundred and some for children, and about three hundred with four fifty-five. and about three hundred with, uh, four fifty-five. That's what I was told by these, when the tip came to the school board.
The two hundred and some, nobody knows.
Do you mind, do you mind making to that?
May I have your name?
Okay, George Andrews. I'm a school board member. Uh, they have not come back to the school board to, uh, uh, tell us there have been changes to the tip. So, I hope you guys don't approve anything for the tip until we need the school board here about it.
Well, they've already approved it, they've got what they've gotta do, is reopen it and relook at it.
Well, if you reopen, relook at, uh, I think you're gonna have a tough time through the school board to, uh, go along with more residential apartments and all there. We were told that it was gonna be a mixed property with commercial and residential, is all I have to say.
You know, St. Luke's does not pay, they can tell you that St. Luke's pays taxes. They do not pay taxes, they're lying to you.
I believe what they say, just watch what they do.
They promised you nine hundred jobs for the original tip. Not gonna get nine hundred jobs.
To set the record straight, all this started before I was even here. And when John mentioned, um, Shop Right, well, I think I came in, um, I tried to, uh, get Wegmans interested, and the answer I got was, um, you have twenty thousand people within five miles, we need a hundred thousand, we're not interested. I'm sure Safeway was the same. Then the question becomes, this is all approved, knowing that it was never gonna happen. What was supposed to happen there?
It was never gonna happen. I know, but really, it's happened now. But you need to reopen the tip, you gave that tip under a different impression that it was gonna be commercials, and nine hundred and some jobs. It is not gonna be that now. Go over there and find out.
Well, I think we should look into it. I, I have to say, much of this happened before I was even here. So, when I came in, I think the tip was already approved by the school board. I can't even remember it, but it was very new.
Or, or two hundred and thirty-six, I think, uh, apartments with children, that was the original tip. Then they wanted to increase it for over fifty-five, which means that we know we're children-
Right, they have a restrictive covenant.
So, you wouldn't have an increase in, in the, uh, uh, not the children going to the school. Uh, the school, we figured if we can probably absorb the thing two hundred and thirty-seven, because we, we do these rental projects. And that's what we, we finally did it on, we okayed it for the fifty-five plus section, uh, because there'd be no more children. Uh, and that's the last we heard from, uh, from the, the tip. So, if, if you're gonna make a change, uh, we're the biggest supplier of, uh, tax payments. Therefore, uh, we're gonna have trouble getting those tax payments. I, well, I'm only speaking for me, I would have, you know, we'd have to speak to the whole board.
Ron, Ron, correct. Correct me if I'm wrong. We, we can't, uh, restrict an apartment to no children unless it's senior living, what can we do?
But it's supposed to be senior, well.
Let, let me just back up, back up for a moment. And, and I understand it. Ms. Barrett may be completely correct, and I could be wrong, but my understanding is, the plan that is before this township has not changed in the way Mr. Andrew has said. Two hundred and some residential apartments, three hundred and some senior living housing places. That's the plan in front of us.
That's the, that's the plan, huh?
Now, I don't know if they've changed it, or they're attempting to change it. Ms. Barrett, based upon her knowledge and background in the township, may know something. I don't mean that in a bad way, I mean that in a good way. But right now, we can only act in what's in front of us, and that's what's in front of us.
John, do you really know?
They're not on it.
Well, they, I was-
I mean, they have, they have preliminary plan approval for what we just described. And if they wanna do something different, they've gotta start to process over again.
Where does that go, I'm thinking, you're agreeing with me. So, listen, you're agreeing with what I said?
I, I'm agreeing with what I believe was the plan in front of us. Now, again, I can't say, is it two hundred residential and three hundred senior, or three hundred residential, two hundred senior? But I thought the total was around five hundred, five hundred projects, if you will.
Yes.
And, and answering the question about the tip, I mean, everyone's agreed to it. I think the only way you get out of it is if, in fact, everyone agrees to get out. And then you're gonna have to develop a, 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 all the stuff that-
I think that money has already been spent, I think, on some of it.
Listen, can I, uh, Brian Barrett here, just, just a quick comment. It, it starts with tip is concerned, the thing that concerns me the most is what we've lived through before in the past, and that was the ESU Seafree project. They've literally signed documents that were recorded saying that they would always, because it was mixed use, private enterprise, they would always pay taxes. All of a sudden, they came for us, and I think, Robert, you might've been with us at this time, they literally had three lawyers come up from Harrisburg Pisha, or whatever they call the organization of state colleges, to refute it. We went and appealed it, and we went before the board to make our case. Ron, you were with me, I think you actually gave me some advice that day. I won't bring that up, but, uh, the fact of the matter was, we, we thought that we had at least co-grade it. Absolutely not, and they did it, and they took it off the tax rolls. I'm scared that St. Luke's is gonna go in there, pay their taxes for a while, and even if these guys, and I mean these guys, Jim DePetras and Doug Olmstead, have a signed agreement that didn't stand up for us, and God forbid we lose that. That is the, that is the hallmark building that's gonna be involved. It's gonna be the largest that could generate the most tax, but if we don't get that involved, and we lose it to tax-free status, uh, uh, we as taxpayers, and again, it's been a tough year, as I say, you know, reassessment raised a lot of taxes to begin with, and people were a little, you know, a little dissatisfied with that. Then, then we get into the situation with some municipalities, including ours, raised our taxes. Fortunately, we're on the bottom end of, of, of that cost, but still, it, it's there. What you do, you, and let me just say, the rule says very simply, if you, it's gotta be two out of three of the taxing entities, one way or the other, to approve it or move to, uh, readdress it. That's my next move. If the changes that are gonna come before us are not de minimis, Ron, excuse me for using that term, if they're not de minimis, they've gotta come back and see us all again, and especially the school board. And, and that, that's my comment.
Brian, this is Ron speaking, and you can use all the terms you want, because you know a lot more about the township than I do, so you're welcome to do that. The, the problem with that, the problem with that East Strausberg crap, uh, whatever that was, project, was that there were some recent cases that came down the pike that gave them an advantage that they did not have before. And so, obviously, the judges in our Commonwealth decided to make those rulings that they took an advantage of. Could that occur to St. Luke's? Well, sure it could, but at least not having the issue that's brought up by your right hand, by saying that we have all these kids in the school district. At least if the St. Luke's thing, project falls flat, or there's an issue, we don't have people in the school district that's causing an issue. Now, that's a very small compensation, but at least it's something. We just gotta keep our fingers processed, and judges in, in Harrisburg don't make goofy decisions that come back to hurt not only Smithfield, but all the townships and boroughs in the state.
So, Ron, I talked to Kathy Carver over at the assessment office, and she just deems about it, all these medical buildings, you can see them going up and down.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure she does.
Not a little more paying taxes.
I'm sure she does.
I mean, it's a sad, I, I am a believer that everything should pay taxes, I mean, it's-
And, and I agree that there might've been some bait and switch with the Shop Right, et cetera, but that's gone, no reason to cry about it. Let's see what we can do to try to salvage this. And I think that's what the township's trying to do, to try to do the right thing for the, the residents, and, and save this project.
Well, the residents can't bear that much of their tax increases. I remember the last time when we went through the housing boom, all the schools that were rescued, that then ended up being closed, sitting empty.
I wasn't here then, but I can certainly unders, I can certainly understand that, that that's, you know.
You can't do that to the, people aren't gonna, I mean, there's not enough around here, people can't do that. People got, they'll, seven hundred dollars, freezes, increases in taxes, I don't know what you've done.
The averag, the average is a difference of about twenty dollars on, on a median home, which is about two hundred thousand dollars.
Still twenty dollars, I'm getting my head out.
Well, Jacob, I think that's, I think it's a little different than that, that, but that re, that refers to us, in, in our taxes, in our local taxes. I think what it first, if you've got a, an appraised house of a hundred thousand dollars, you, you multiply that point by point, oh, point eight, and it, that gives you the rate for the thousand dollar assessment. If you take it out to ten thousand, you just do the multiplication.
If you compare tax increases, you're making two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, and see how you like it.
Pam, I'm not gonna entertain that. I appreciate the fact that you're involved, and you're speaking, but I'm not gonna be personally denigrated.
You're not being denigrated, I'm just saying, you don't, nobody applies, because you can't experience it, because you're not in that position.
I know that I'm in a different position, but I know that there are others. Now, I see, hold on, I see Mr. Diamond, and then I'll, I'll let Mr. Petruzzo talk.
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe clarify a little bit. Uh, you were saying, like, eighteen thousand per student? It, it's really, you know, it's twenty-four and a little, uh, special ed students run anywhere from thirty to sixteen thousand a year. Um, the other, the other big numbers for the school district is they still have around four hundred and thirty or four hundred and forty million in debt from when the first building boom hit. And, uh, that's what's been traded, but, but, and we have over a hundred million in, in repairs that needs to be done to the current schools because, you know, of, of all the substandard construction.
Sure.
Sir, may I have your name, please? May I have your name?
Lyre. My last name is Diamond, D Y M O, pending.
I'm sure you can ask that, but they sold that idea to us, and want, saying, this is what, don't recycle, commercial buildings are done, this, this, and that, and then they go and change it. I would think, give us the chance, give us the reasons, we have to open that tip and reevaluate it.
Yeah, Ms. Barrett, I would have to read that tip agreement again, it's, you know, very long and complicated, to see if that can be done. Uh, but I believe that even if it could be done, it's probably gonna require all three taxing districts to agree. So, that means that-
I think it's two out of three.
In, in any case, they, they, what they have presented and have approval for, uh, hasn't changed. And, and the TIF district is separate from the overall project. So, there, there's a delineation there.
I'll do a little work over the next few, few days or weeks, to see if something can be done with that tip, and, you know, deference to, uh, the request. But I, I just don't know that answer right now.
Mr. Petruzzo?
I wanna add one other thing to this. First of all, Vice Chairman, you, you said something about you can't regulate kids in a- I don't care how many kids somebody has, and I don't care if they build five million homes down there. Just don't do it with everybody else's money. They should fix the roads themselves, maybe they paid too much for the property. Engineer, you're right, if they changed it, let's get them back on the drawing board and say, hey, wait a minute, you, we, we approved it under these circumstances, not this. And remember my saying. They say one thing and do another. They promise you the world, they give you our page, and I've seen it for decades. And I am tired of it, that's why yesterday I announced my candidacy for the hundred and eighty-ninth legislative district. Because I've had it right up to here. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Petruzzo. Is there any other public comment before we, uh?
Can I speak now?
Sure, and, and then, then we will go to, uh, recess before the, the six o'clock meeting.
I'm sure you're not gonna like it anymore. That's the Marshall's Falls property, the reason you jumped up and down, and my husband isn't here, you replaced him with this one. You went in there, the house was appraised at a hundred and twenty-five. You hired Tom McEwen to sell it. That's against second town, second class township code, and you knew that, you were told that. So, you added another seventy-one hundred, seventy-five hundred dollars to the price. Now, if he only would've had the listing, that seventy-five hundred dollars would've come out of the hundred and twenty-five. And you're so gracious, you gave ten thousand dollars to the people to move. I don't think we're in the moving business. Then you went out and hired another appraiser to try to hide it. And I understand you asked Mr. Karasak if that would work, if that would hide it, and he said you could try it.
Hide what?
But I have it all listed in here. You, everything you did was against the law, and you did wrong.
What, what did I hide, I'm sorry, I don't know.
The second appraisal?
You got us a better appraisal, so it wouldn't look like he, Mr. McEwen was the only appraiser.
We had to do that by law.
You did have to do that. You had him as the appraiser, he appraised the property for a hundred and twenty-five.
Two years before.
He pr, and it was by-
A hundred and thirty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five.
It was by until Brian told you, you can't do this, I've got a copy of it right here. I figure you two, at this point, owe the town to each of you eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars that you have misappropriated and township fund. I've contacted our auditors, they're gonna be going, look at it, review it. You took that money, it's against the law, it's pretty serious. And I think you are resigning. You're not sitting here-
I think what you should do is, is file a criminal complaint against it.
I have done that.
Okay.
And another thing-
Now, now, hold on.
Yeah.
Ms. Barrett said.
Yes.
Was not the procedure that we followed per your good-faith advice?
Yes.
So, you would defend it in court?
Yes.
And there was no issue?
Now, again, as Ms. Barrett said, could some judge say I was wrong? Sure, but I believe that was what had to be done to cure any defect with respect to the McEwen appraisal, and the board followed that advice.
There was no reason for you to do that, that's the way you've been doing business.
If I may jump in here, um, the reason that we had to get the second appraisal is because the board is only allowed to act on that appraisal as long as it's not over. Some of the human appraisal was given to the township in December of twenty eighteen. And when we were looking at purchasing the house in twenty twenty, the appraisal was too old for us to use.
Uh, excuse me, Julia, again, I've, I've been, Julia, it's Brian. Uh, the appra, we checked the appraisal, and in fact, we did find out that it was still valid. I was surprised, but the, the appraisal was valid. The whole idea was, we had a situation with, with, with the people who lived in, in that place, and we, uh, ho, I guess it was implied that we're gonna pay them a hundred and thirty-five, we're only allowed to pay them a hundred and twenty-five. Then it came to the point where the appraiser who did the original appraisal was gonna get involved in any of it. Again, we found out, according to the second class township code, that couldn't happen. Ergo, a second appraisal was asked, and I think it was Fisher and Fisher, and that came in, and I forget it was five hundred dollars or whatever. But that opened the door so that you could go back to McEwen and have him get back involved with the process. And that's as simple as it, that was the simple way of going, I think, around the corner to get things done. Simple as that.
And it had a profit, a silver plate, one he didn't earn.
I'm sorry?
The breach of your right issue-
Alright, alright. Anyway, that's my last comment.
Let's also remember what was going on at the time. We had been trying for over three years.
No, no, nobody was gonna run in and buy that house, I'll come under you.
We didn't interrupt you, you gotta let him talk to.
We were in danger of losing the grant that we have for this park. We also-
No, we weren't.
Had an impasse with Pendott, because unless we had that property, we couldn't close the driveway to open up the driveway we needed, both for our parking lot and also to bring in construction equipment. So, we were, we fit a rock in a hard place.
No, you weren't fit a rock in a hard place. The house still sits there.
And it's gonna be demolished.
The house still sits there, you were just-
And the driveway is open, and Pendott gave us the hot-
Do you mind reminding us of the history on your involvement with the grants, and why the grants were facing the lack of an extension, and that Pendott wouldn't have granted us the HO pay?
All you had to do, if they read to one twenty-five, you only had to do is call Mr. Karasak, and he would've handled to close it.
I don't think it's, uh, I, I don't think it's probably legal, and I, I, it's not ethical. I don't think it's, uh, I, I don't think it's probably legal, and I, I, it's not ethical for a township to be negotiating both sides of the deal. The seller has to have somebody representing them, not the township attorney. Isn't that true, Mr. Karasak? In any legal ethics, you cannot do that.
Generally, I do not represent both sides in a real estate transaction.
All, all he had to do was do, if it was agreed to, all he had to do was prepare the closing papers. And why do we take somebody ten thousand dollars to move? Are we in the moving business?
I'm not gonna say anything more about this, but I, I, I suggest you file criminal charges against me. That's what you wanna do, do it.
Why, because you owe all the money. You owe money to the township, it took it. Now, one more thing, what you did to Lois Tur, to humiliate...
We will not get into personnel matters.
Humiliate an eighty-seven-year-old woman and embarrass her because I called her and asked about a chat. And then I asked her if your Lynn had gotten a COVID because Brian had just had heart surgery. You humiliated an eighty-seven-year-old woman. How old are you? Fifteen? Did that make you feel good?
Ms. Barrett?
Did that make you feel good? Is that the way you were raised?
Ms. Barrett?
I feel like an asshole.
Ms. Barrett, you will suspend, you will cease.
I will not listen to you, you little...
That's quick, very nice, make good pancakes. I will remind you that I was raised by good, decent people.
And you would not have treated her that way.
She violated HIPAA, and we are not going to get into...
We're not getting into that.
Well, that's...
First of all, public comment isn't a question of an answer period.
All I asked her...
It is also not a character assassination...
All I asked her, Lois, is she got COVID because I, because I didn't want Brian in here. You take a woman who's never taken a day off in this place, we come in here Saturdays and Sundays. You oughta be, I'm ashamed of yourself.
Thirty-two, it's, uh, enter the motion to recess?
No, I will say one more thing. I want to remind the public that government is complex and that stuff like this happens sometimes. I think my friends from the school board ha- know exactly how it can be. But I, I want to say that I was raised by good and decent people who served our country, who have served our county. And, you know, to talk about my character in a way that Ms. Barrett has done for the last three years has severely hurt a lot of people in my life. And I think it's disgraceful the way that she behaves. And I'm disappointed that this happens, that she threatens staff and emails consistently, that she writes racist things on Facebook, that she writes that I have no job, that I'm not educated, that I'm going nowhere in my life. So with all due respect, I'm not interested in entertaining this anymore. And I think that it's only fair that we spare the public this innuendo, this disgraceful behavior. I think that a township does not deserve to be put through this. And I think that, at this point, uh, we're ready to keep moving on, keep doing good things. We're involving the public, we're streaming things. We're making sure that good government is taking place here, and we have a good team, and...
I have a good team, my husband and I are coming here because of you two. You made me feel so unwanted, it's disgusting. Sixteen years he worked here, and then that little punk jumps up and down treating him like shit.
I'm gonna ask you to, to, to stop talking at this point.
The only thing I ever said to you, you're a little boy, you shouldn't, you're too little...
I am twenty-one years old. You are a seventy-year-old woman attacking everybody in this township. When it doesn't suit you, you attack everyone else.
You're stealing money from the township.
I think it's been made clear that I have not, and Mr. Karasak would say the same.
I, I agree, and I think we should just stop the conversation at this point. Recession until the six o'clock public meeting.
Yeah.
I, I would like to say only one last thing. I'm proud of the, the, the way that the three supervisors have worked together, uh, over the past few years. And I can think of very few instances, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, very few, where we've really disagreed. I think we've worked as a very good team, and I think all of us have, um, a, a very similar outlook on where we'd like to see the township go. That's all I have to say.
That said, I'll entertain a motion to recess until six PM, when we will have our public hearing on the Shawnee Valley, uh, planned residential development amendment. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Lovenheim, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so at this point, I'm gonna mute the phone here and turn off the camera, and we will resume a couple minutes before...
Jacob, Jacob?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, I'm going to, uh, le- leave it as it is, okay? I guess I'll, uh, mute myself, and, and then I can just come back. I won't lose connection, will I?
Yep, you'll be set.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, hope you're good. Brian, are you still with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Excellent, good, and Donna is here as well. Good evening, folks, it is 6:07 so we're going to reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting, specifically for the public hearing on the Shawnee Valley planned residential development. At this point, I will turn it over to our solicitor Ron Karasak to go over the beginning procedures.
All right, good evening, everyone. Let me know if you can hear me. Try to keep my voice up, I've been raising six kids, I've learned how to do that real well. But, we are here tonight as a second hearing with respect to the application of Shawnee Stage 1A to have an approval of a 2021 amended stage 1B. And I say that because 1A, I believe, is in the process of development, stages 2 and 3 are now part of the preserve property. Stage 4 is a long way to go yet, so we need to follow the amendment. Those of you who may want to speak as to the other items understand that there may be an objection posed because we're only here for the 1B amendment. Now, as to housekeeping, since the time of the last hearing, I did receive a written precipice for appearance by a Holly Cadwalader. If I mispronounce that name, I apologize. And also Pamela Barrett. And there was also a request made for Joanne Morris, that her husband be granted party status. I'm not sure, is she here, Ms. Morris? And this is not a loaded question.
There's an N, not an M, it's an N, like Doris, but not Morris.
Norris, I haven't spelled Norris, but I said Morris, so I apologize. And this is not a loaded question, but I need to know that you and your husband are together in the same household. He definitely lives somewhere else.
Over 40 years.
Okay, well, then that being, then that being said, I would tell the board, obviously, to grant Mr. Norris party status based upon that. And then, you're welcome. A second one is that Mr. William Stockbridge's form had a second name on it, who was not mentioned, and it's difficult to read. So let me see if I can get that form in front of me, so we can sort of figure out who that might be. I don't seem to have that form in front of me. Is Mr. Stockbridge here?
Yes.
And who was the other individual on that form?
It was my husband, Greg.
Greg, okay. And again, the two of you are together in the same household?
Yes.
All right, so that being said, I don't have any issue in recommending to the board that that individual be given party status with respect to this matter. All right, now, looking at the notes of testimony from the last hearing. Sir Hunter had effectively completed his testimony, and the feeling was that unless his exhibits, which I believe are 19 in number, were electronically provided to the township so that everyone, party people who have party status, lawyers, et cetera, could look at them, it would be a futile effort to try to ask some questions without having the documents looked at and reviewed prior to that time. But we are now here at that stage, I'm assuming, from what I was told, that the documents were electronically provided, and anyone who wanted to look at them could do that. I'm not, I, there is one housekeeping item, and I will ask, uh, Mr. Hunter, and I believe Attorney DeVito is here on behalf of the Shawnee Preservation Society. How do you want to handle the issue with respect to the whether they're called conflicting exhibits between the court filed document of the settlement agreement and what you produced, you meaning Mr. Hunter, or that they were not clear and legible, et cetera? Do you want to direct that issue now? Or do you want to address that in your, your side of your presentation, Mr. DeVito?
Thank you, Mr. Karasak. Attorney Leo DeVito here on behalf of
You're lucky to come up to the table. This does not have to be on the record. I see that Mr. DeVito brought the big boss, Lisa Pereira.
My name is introduction.
Good evening, everyone.
So, again, and I don't mean to spud your thunder, but we're just on this one issue, how you want to address this exhibit issue. And it's Exhibit 7, I think, that was called into question by Ms. Carbone through an email in the last week or so. Uh, do you want to do that now? Or do you want to wait until we come to your, your case? Which you'll be up, because you're the first party that has an attorney.
Yeah, I, and I was made aware of that via email. Again, Attorney Leo DeVito here on behalf of the Shawnee Preservation Society. With me is my partner, Mrs. Lisa Pereira. Uh, made aware of that via the email. Uh, and I'll be frank with you, Mr. Karasak, haven't had the chance to sit down side to side. We just were able to pull, we had some difficulties pulling the recorded documents in Monroe County. Um, I mean, if we finish up, or it looks like we're going to finish up this evening, I'll certainly sit down and compare page to page to make sure that they are consistent. We've been looking at the Monroe County recorded document, the agreement. Uh, we did notice that some of the pages were not quite legible, uh, which created, you know, obviously creates a problem. But to say that they are page for page exact, I'm not prepared to do that at this moment.
All right, well, that, that's fine. Mr. Hunter was kind enough to submit an email uh, as of yesterday that compared the pages that he thought were the same, and maybe where there are some changes. So we'll address it at time. But let me go back to Mr. Hunter then. All right, sir, are you done with your presentation on your case in chief? Because if so, we're going to turn it over to the other, other side.
Could I respond to your question?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, and, and again, I appreciate you having the chance to look at what I, what I did to compare. Uh, I believe Ms. Carbone found one, one incorrect item. Uh, the digit D that was in our, uh, copy of the Shawnee Preservation Society.
You mean Appendix D?
Yes, Appendix D, thank you, thank you. And that appendix, uh, was a different, a, a draft version of the identical map. Uh, so we would recommend that they correct updated Appendix D included in the final record. We'd agree that was something that we didn't correct in our schedule. Uh, we also would recommend or request that the documents that are on file at the county do have errors in them. For example, that document is missing an entire page in the settlement agreement. The document is missing. We think that we should agree to correct the documents and ensure that the documents that are uploaded are the illegible colored documents that everybody intended by them assigned.
Okay.
Oh, you're not under oath, but go ahead.
Okay. All I want to say is, oh, my goodness, I didn't realize all this. Um, I was just trying to bring it to you, because the one map on the township that I thought it was a draft version. And this is the version of the map that we're supposed to replace it with. So, um, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, there's probably hundreds of people that have downloaded those exhibits so that we can set a chance that it's probably a mistake. And I haven't had a chance either to look at it too. And there may be notable changes between these maps. Like I said, it may be just basically drafted in a final version with notable differences in its body of the map. The map may be there for illustrative purposes only for the body of the settlement, it's not in any way. Um, so, and then I did go and look, I think I told you on the set, I was trying to figure the location, but when I did that, it was correct, and very hard to read, and it's like pages like that. I think it's just that maybe correct, and I can't fully review it myself. But I believe it's kind of a nothing burger.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll address that, you know, going forward. Uh, we have Mr. Hunter's statement. And that being said, on that item, Mr. Hunter, anything else you want to present in your case in chief? Okay, then. The way it normally works, so everyone knows how the township does it, uh, normally, the township will allow, uh, parties who have their attorney ask questions. Now, again, if the attorney is there for the parties, the parties aren't asking questions too. There's no double TV. If you have an attorney, that's who asks the questions, not you. Uh, and then the people who do not have attorneys as parties can ask questions. And of course, they can also be questioned, cross-examined. At that point, then, the township supervisors can ask questions of, of anyone who has testified. And then finally, we have public comment at the end. And note that our public comment is simply a three-minute public comment. It's not a question and answer session, uh, you didn't do the right thing kind of, uh, session. It's comments. You make your comment, and when you're done, you sit down. You'll be given three minutes. So, that being said, uh, the Shawnee Preservation Society is represented by Attorney DeVito, and we will pass the case over to him at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Karasak. Good evening, uh, Supervisors. Stand over here so that you can hear me. Uh, I too, don't have a problem protecting my voice, so I hope everybody can hear me. If you can't, please let me know. Mr. Hunter, good evening.
You can stand here if you want, you'll be on video too.
Hi. Mr. Hunter, good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Hunter, uh, you are aware, and I've reviewed your testimony, uh, and I believe you testified that you're aware of the existence of the settlement agreement uh, between basically three parties dated December 8, 2009. Those parties being Smithfield Township, prior owner of this property, and what I will call the objectives. You're aware of that agreement?
Yes.
And that's the one that you referred to in your testimony?
Yes, settlement agreement.
Okay. And just hold on for one second, Mr. DeVito. I'm looking at, in the exhibits that were presented by Mr. Hunter, that is noted as Exhibit 7, unless you disagree.
No, no, it, it was Exhibit 7.
All right.
All right. And you're here before the Smithfield Township or the supervisors requesting an amendment to the already approved PRD plan uh, that's mentioned or contained in the settlement agreement. Is that correct?
It is.
And part of those amendments, uh, are dealt with, but not the amendments, but you're changing what was agreed to by your predecessor or requesting a change by your predecessor. Is that fair?
Do you
Sure.
Are you saying change to the PRD?
To the, to the PRD plan?
Yes.
Okay. You're also aware that the PRD agreements, the agreement contains a procedure by which any amendments are to be accomplished. Is that true?
Yes.
And that procedure is a three-part procedure, correct?
I don't know, uh, I'll have to defer to you if you got it in front of you.
Do you have a copy of the agreement?
I can pull it up.
Please see what you have, Mr. Carbone. Do you have it?
Just, just take the number and section you're referring to, Mr. DeVito, please.
Sure, Section 3G, page 34.
You say 3, that's Roman numeral 3?
Roman numeral 3, that's correct.
Yeah, page 34, I see assignment, succession assignment, severability, entire G.
Correct, and then G?
Modifications, yep.
Modifications. That section, 3G, Roman 3G, sets forth the procedure by which the settlement agreement can be changed, added to, modified, or amended, amended. Is that correct?
Yes.
And it starts with number 1, Arabic 1, that any change, addition, modification, or amendment must be set forth in writing signed by the parties. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
And in fact, as we sit here this evening, you have no such agreement signed by any of the parties, is that correct?
So, Mr. DeVito, I'd like to elaborate on my answer.
Well, you can answer my question first, and then you can elaborate. There is no signed agreement between the parties, is that correct?
We did not get an agreement yet.
Okay, and you recognize that for this project to go forward, the settlement agreement will have to be amended, is that correct?
Not necessarily. We could remove, uh, the differences in the PRD amendment. There are two issues that we brought to the Shawnee Preservation Society in June of this past year that we taken out of what we meant. Right now, we have two items in the plan where we asked to amend with them. We met on June 10, 2021. Uh, we presented the five changes that were making in the PRD plan. Two of the changes were the roadway that we had to discuss with SPS. Second change that differs from the PRD agreement was the three houses that we proposed on Nob Lane. They added that to SPS with the intent that they would, with us, discuss the issues, uh, work out any questions they had, and then we could arrive here with an amendment, but we never had any answers. If, that was the president of SPS, the vice president of SPS, secretary of SPS, and the treasurer of SPS as well as a couple of members. We didn't get a, a chance to get an amendment because there was no response.
Now, I'm not, not trying to be cute, Mr. Hunter, but you did review this agreement before you and your partners acquired this property, correct? And you understood it, correct? Can you show me in the agreement where there's a requirement that my client, SPS, agreed to any amendments to what was agreed to in the settlement agreement?
They could remain silent, I suppose, and not participate in the process.
So that, so that you're
I, I don't know that there, that there's some compelling thing that allows them to simply not agree to anything ever again, despite whatever testimony might exist or lack.
Can you point to the settlement agreement that was approved by the Monroe County Court where it indicates that my clients, and I'm not saying we may not agree to anything, where my clients are agreed, are required to respond to a request for an amendment under any timeframe or duration?
I'm not able to answer that question.
You're not able to answer it because there is no such provision in the agreement?
I wouldn't know.
I thought you just indicated to me, Mr. Hunter, that you read the agreement.
I've read the agreement, but I'm not familiar with that. Is that whether there's a provision like that in the agreement? I don't recall every word and every sentence.
Now
If you're asking me to go on record that I do or don't know, I don't know that there's a provision like that or not. Okay, if you say there isn't, that's right.
I'm not the one, I'm not the one bound by disagreement. I'm asking you as to your knowledge of disagreement. That's correct. I'm not the one bound by this. You are, the township is, SPS, and some individuals are.
Yes.
As I collectively call them, the objectives. And I'm asking you for your knowledge. So if you don't know, that's fine, you don't know.
I'm aware of it.
You're telling the board that you don't know?
My question you're asking me is, now, I don't know if anybody in the agreement that relates to telling, uh, any party to agree.
Would you also agree with me that Arabic number 2 of Section 3G provides that after there is a writing signed by the parties that any changes, modifications, or amendments of this agreement agreed to by the party shall be the subject of a properly noticed public meeting, per en, whether regular or special, close per en, and vote of Smithfield Town, of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors prior to the party's execution of the change, addition, modification, or amendment. Did I read that correctly?
You did.
Is it also, would you also would agree with me that Arabic 3 requires that any change, addition, modification, or amendment must be presented to and approved by the Court of Common Pleas of Monroe County?
It says that. I didn't want to ask the question for some reason SPS didn't bring this up when the first two amendments were signed.
Sure that?
Uh, the first two amendments don't have Smithfield Township on them. I'm not sure why. I, I don't know why they were not on.
But they were approved
closing the term, where we were
I'm sorry, I, I didn't, again, okay, start that sentence again, please.
I forgot what it
Sorry. I don't know why they were not on.
I don't know why Smithfield Township was not on those two amendments. Those two amendments pertaining to our work with SPS and the trust for public land to convey 550 acres full preservation. SPS was fully in favor of it, so they didn't raise any objections. In fact, the Smithfield Township was not a signatory to be their amendment, but I think both agreed that they should have been.
Do you have a copy of the amendment in front of you?
I guess.
With the order?
Amendment, for that or the second one?
The order
I'm not sure what you're
Court, September 11, September 20th, 2011. Do you have a copy of the court order? The motion to approve the joint settlement?
I don't think I have it.
I know.
Thank you. Yep, I do have copies of these in files.
Do you agree, agree with me that the first page is the order approving the First Amendment to the settlement agreement and the Second Amendment to the settlement agreement signed by Judge Ronald E. Viken? First page of the document I gave you.
I appreciate that.
While he's looking, Mr. DeVito, just line here with my notes here. The First Amendment was noted as Exhibit 8 in Mr. Hunter's packet and Second Amendment as Exhibit 9 in that packet.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so your question again about this?
Sure, the first page is an order of court signed by President Judge Ronald Viken approving the First Amendment to the settlement agreement and the Second Amendment to the settlement agreement, is that correct?
Okay, good.
Now, if you would turn to the second page, that document is captioned "Joint Motion to Approve Settlement Agreement Amendments." Did I read that correctly?
Okay.
Did I read it correctly, sir? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Would you agree with me on page 2 of the order and settlement agreements? And I'll read it to you, make sure I read it correctly, please. And now comes Shawnee Development Inc., per en SDI, close per en, Shawnee Preservation Society, Holly Cad Walander, Walder, Martha Carbone, Timothy Carbone, and Robert L. Bauer, collectively SPS, and Smithfield Township. Did I read that correctly?
Yes, you're correct.
So as we sit here this evening, you're not saying that Smithfield Township was not aware of the amendments, is that correct?
No, what I said was I have the two amendments, and there's, there's only signatories for, uh, SDIs, which was the developer at the time, and SPS, uh, appellant, at, at that time. That's the only signatures that's on the two amendments. And you're bringing to my attention that it was rolled up and submitted to court with the third signature, uh, so
Well, my point is, the township was aware of the amendments just by virtue of their participation in this, correct?
I would infer that, yes, I
And in fact, the Karasak who's with us this evening was the current solicitor for Smithfield Township. You go to page 4.
Yep, here.
Is it fair to say, Mr. Hunter, that in light of the knowledge of the agreements... Let me go back a second. The first and second amendments were signed agreements. Is that correct?
They were amendments.
Right. And they were signed by the appropriate parties?
My only reason for hesitating to answer is I don't know, and I said this before, why the township doesn't sign the amendment itself. During the draft amendment that I drafted to present to SPS, it included township on it and to understand if they would be placed on it, but I was going by the amendment that I had in front of me.
And the process at that point in time, if you look at the joint motion, was the signed agreement, public hearing acknowledging that agreement by Smithfield Township, and then ultimately submitted to the court for approval. Would you agree that that was the process for the first and second amendments?
I don't disagree.
All right. Do you also agree with me, Mr. Hunter, that unless and until you receive a signed agreement by all three parties, that it's the subject of a public hearing, that agreement and the terms of that amendment, and then ultimately submitted to the court? Without that, would you agree with me that you would not be able to proceed with the amended tentative plan that's before this board tonight, with a caveat, unless you remove two items that you referred to?
I'm not prepared to accept that notion that by ignoring all requests to deal with an issue, that the appellants are able to obstruct the proceedings. They're soft to meet, soft to discuss. And if you go into the other parts of the SPS settlement agreement, there are provisions that open up to when there are disputes or concerns, there's parties, and it names a procedure that should not be brought up here. It explains those procedures. It gives timetables for the time to respond, and that should lead to a discourse where we can arrive at a peaceful agreement or realize that there's no agreement and proceed again.
Have you availed yourself of any of the procedures contained in the settlement agreement as we sit here tonight?
Do you elaborate on your question?
Sure. You just told me there are procedures contained within the agreement. I mean, in your words...
We did. We met with them on June 10th. There's a timeframe. After that, nobody responded. Yet, we pursued it and had no response. That's the point.
And you... We had a conversation yesterday, didn't we? And Ms. Ferrera was also in that conversation.
Yes.
You recall me indicating to you that my clients were willing to sit down with you and discuss these issues?
Yes, yesterday.
Yeah. And that's the first time you reached out to me. Is that correct, sir?
I have reached out to SPS 35 times last year.
But the first time you reached out to me is a couple days before we had a meeting. Is that correct?
Only because we come adversarial instead of a dialogue.
Wasn't it because my client suggested or requested...
I actually asked for it.
One of the... Thank you.
It wasn't because my client requested or suggested that you speak to me in my office?
No, it was the other way around. I asked Vince if I could speak with you. I called Vince. I called the president of SPS because nobody assumed anything. So I reached out to Vince Ferrera. I asked for, trying to find a dialogue with the residents of Nob Lane because this is affecting their houses. Nobody else is in the entire Smithfield Township or affected directly by the two small changes. And I've tried to, I asked Martha to submit to me the phone numbers for the five residents so I could try and reach Mr. Stockbridge and his husband, so I could reach Bridget. I've talked with Martha and Tim in the past, and I tried to reach out to them. I asked Martha for the phone numbers, and she said she gave my phone number to them. I have no way to reach the people to be able to have a communication. I asked Vince last week following up, and that's when I called you after I got the instinct it was okay with SPS for me to have this dialogue.
You knew I was involved in this matter back in November of 2021, correct?
No. I'm trying to think when I first saw...
I'll go to the transcript.
Just let me answer your question. There was a letter, Martha put together a list of notes. You covered a letter, kind of like knowing that date that that letter was, because the first notification I had was the day Mr. Karasak... I never had a letter come to me. The letter came to Smithfield Township. Mr. Karasak graciously forwarded it to me and made me aware of the letter. I'd never had any other information, so I don't know what that date was.
And you knew I was involved at that time, or my firm was involved at that time, correct?
What did that date was? Can you tell me?
You can go through your transcript.
I have in front of me, Mr. DeVito, and I'm not meant to steal your thunder...
No, go ahead.
...a letter that you sent to me dated December 14th...
December 14th.
...with respect to this matter. And I don't know if there was an earlier letter where you sent a recap of the argument, but I have a certified letter coming to me on that date.
The letter that I have is dated December 4th, 2021. It's a cover letter to two pages of notes that Martha had prepared representing SPS. I don't know exactly. I could look in emails and find out exactly what was forwarded, and that was forwarded. We then, I then went through that, went through researching the information on January 5th to reply, arrived to the last here. That's my transcript. Back to your point, we've been trying to talk to SPS and specifically to the Nob Lane residents about specific details of what the differences are, try and understand their concerns, have to address those concerns to the degree that we can.
As you sit here today, you're still willing to speak with my clients?
Depends.
Depends?
I can't go on and do this forever. Started in March of this year with my first effort to try and approach Vince. On March 10th or so, I said, I have two issues to discuss. We have a meeting in June, June 10th. Let's see if we can iron this out. I have the photographs. We still have the display in our office on Ruchy Road of that meeting. And I went through this, five things were changing in the PRD amendment, the 2021 amendment. And I pointed out the two items that were concerned. We began to hear concerns. Ken is there. We had a discussion with him. He suggested, for example, instead of three houses, why not, what if he did two? I said, you should just talk through those things. There was never any response back, and I could never get another meeting or a follow-up to that. So the only reason I'm saying all of that, I'm not going to do this forever. I don't think you want to either. I don't think they do either, and I don't think the supervisors do either. So if you want to set a 30-day timeline or a 15-day timeline, it's not that complicated. I can't sit down with people. I'm spending the day here tomorrow. I have to make myself available for that.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Hunter. And again, it's not a loaded question. It's not meant to compromise you. You are the applicant, and the township will afford you whatever time you need, just like it would afford the Shawnee Preservation Society and the parties. But if the township would say, we are going to schedule this in what month, allow you that month to see if you could put this to bed with the Shawnee Preservation Society and/or any other individuals, are you willing to consider that?
How am I assured that they will participate in a reasonable way?
If we have Mr. DeVito, whom I've known for many, many years, say that they will participate, then I believe we can rely upon that. Now, is there attorney? I have many clients who sometimes are blockheads and don't want to listen to me, and you can't control that, but you can control that I will make sure that my clients are available for one, two, three meetings, whatever it takes, but only in a 30-day window. I don't want to give this, put this out for forever to see if it can be done. Assuming that would occur, would you be willing to consider that? Now, I don't know if the board is, but I wanted to first see from you, and then we'll discuss with the board what they think. It's not meant to jam you. If you need five minutes, then we'll give you five minutes.
I'm just thinking about the past process and the lack of response and the fact that, and this is not intended to, it's not intended to negative comment about SPS or the membership of the fact that there are individual points of view that are not necessarily all aligned. I need to have, to go back to what the settlement agreement said, the end of SPS was the person that was supposed to be in contact. Now, I guess the appellants, it needs to focus, get this done, and you can't drive.
And I agree with you. And that's why I'm saying just a 30-day window. If in fact, you're not giving, you're not able to resolve it, or they're not acting in good faith, or you're not acting in good faith, or something in between, a month from now, we are nowhere as off than we were before, other than 30 days. You come back to court, you continue to present your case, they present theirs, and the supervisors decide the case. I'm just determining whether or not, if what I'm hearing is now Mr. DeVito's involved and he would be willing to assist, we could even say 20 days, but I can tell you, looking at my schedule, it probably would be set again for now. March days are the same as February days because 28th is in February, so it would be March 9th.
Karasak.
Yes.
I think before we should even ask Mr. Hunter to respond to that, we ought to at least hear from the other parties who were represented by lawyers, so we know if there are any other issues in this case that haven't been brought up. I don't know, but...
I don't think there is. I know that Attorney Charles Vogt is here.
Okay.
However, he is here for clients that deal with the stage four, really not relevant to that matter here. If there are any other attorneys, please stand up, and I stand corrected, but I believe it is only Mr.... Oh, there is one more? Yes. Okay, yes. Mr. Wolf. Yes, Mr. Wolf.
I'm back for the team speak.
That's okay. You heard what I had to say? You represent people in the 1B section?
Actually, 1A, it's showing the valley of the...
Okay.
Village is, I'm trying to say 1A.
Okay. So that's built out, but that's fair. You represent the association. You've heard what I've had to say. Do you have any problem with that? If in fact, Mr. Hunter would agree, it depends upon what he wants to do. We have to follow his lead.
I don't have a problem with the continuance. I think I would like, my client would not afford me to settle an agreement, although it's quite directly interactive and... But we're here, and I think I'll give Mr. DeVito and his clients a somewhat even have a table at this point.
Okay. Well, again, it may well be that Mr. Hunter doesn't want to give you a seat, or it may well be. Have a seat, we'll see what you have to say, but I'm asking on the general principle if this matter gets rescheduled 30 days, if you have any issue with that.
Mr. Karasak, correct.
Yes.
I'll just hold on a moment. I would like to have SBOA and... Go ahead with your work today. I don't want anything I say about agreeing or disagreeing, especially to change the opportunities to get that going through out. I would like to know that individuals that I've been trying to speak with, Mr. Stockbridge and his partner, Bridget, I would like to know that they are there to bring to it, and I think maybe I'd like to defer our answer to this until we've had a chance to make sure we put a couple of things, individuals in particular. So...
At the very least, it seems we should hear from Mr. DeVito. We should hear from Mr. Wolf.
Let's hear from Mr. Vogt.
I can tell you, I can tell you conditionally, answer is yes, it's what I've tried to do for nine months, and 30 more days, I agree more like 21, that we've worked together and another seven to figure out how we get here again. So I just...
And I'm saying, I think we should table that, answer that question until we at least hear from attorneys here on both sides, so we all have all the information.
Can we hear from Mr. Vogt, because he's still standing? Before we get to that, I think it'd be nice to have all the people that want to be recognized at the moment hear them, then we can come back to that.
I have one comment. In additions to page four, our very referred to, it has to be residential quarters, but you only value some to a square property.
I'm trying to speak...
Shawnee Square. Yes. Change this to...
You're speaking of Shawnee Square? You're in a different PRD than this is now? We're different owners?
Excuse me. Charlie, I don't want to interrupt. It's Brian Barrett. I'm really not, you're coming in garbled to me a little bit. Hopefully, we... I just didn't understand your last couple of sentences. Sorry for that.
It is the map. We should have pulled back that.
My only comment, Brian, was that the, one client is very interested that there be no changes to the approval for the commercial, the non-residential portion of the PRD. They are primarily act, they were removed from the Plum Mountain area and moved over to Shawnee Square a number of years ago.
If I could answer that, that we understand the language that's in all the documents I've submitted requires a couple of wordsmithing issues to reconcile what Charlie's brought up, and we already understand it and can, if we agree in principle, I need the time to sort that out. So my simple answer is we'll ensure it's correct. Don't disagree with the consent. And I think there's a percentage of...
I'd just like to comment that the more I learn about this PRD, the more it seems like amazed it has no exit.
It's not simple.
All right. That said...
I used to have red hair, okay? I used to have hair.
That said, Ron, I just want to say, I think that, you know, at least in the moment, I'd like to let Mr. DeVito make the rest of his case. You know, I share Robert's opinion on that. I also think that, you know, if it sounds like there's a consensus, the settlement's controlling, that's got to be followed, and I think it's premature to talk about, you know, the end stage until there is something. So I'm not insisting on a continuance until we hear the rest of what has to be offered. I think that, you know, that can be decided later on, but I think that we have an obligation to at least hear out the parties first.
Okay. Well, I was just attempting to save some time. If the matter can be settled, there's no reason for us to sit here for hours on it.
Sure, sure. No, I can appreciate...
And that you're the chair, we will follow your lead.
Sure, but I can appreciate that no one wants to, you know, waste any time, but I also just think that, you know, the township has to allow significant deference to the people that live there, to an extent, and also just hear out the case. I mean, I don't think we have a discretionary docket, so to speak.
Mr. DeVito, you may proceed. May I ask for a two-minute recess? I want to confirm with my client that in fact we are going, willing to meet within a timeframe. I understand the chair's position, but I don't want to leave here and then be told, no, no way, no how. I'd like to know that now so we could just keep forging ahead with our... So if I can have two minutes, just to step outside and speak with my client?
You would just understand, though, the chair's position is he wants to hear the case. He's not willing to allow time.
No, no, I want to clarify. I'm willing to hear it out, but I mean, the reason we're here is because there's no agreement. I think that's clear. So I mean, if you want to go find that now, go ahead. I'm just saying.
Okay. Well, then, I understand. I misunderstood what you said. So we can take five and...
Just let me step outside for a moment. Is this your real one? I don't know the rest of your case. I don't know what you plan to come forward with. Question, I think, is whether agreeing to the discussion in the timeframe we're talking about, does that affect how you present your case? Would it mean that if we don't come to consensus, we move whatever else you've got in your pocket, like torpedo things? Would that move to the next hearing? Or is your plan to present things that keep anything from moving forward?
Just so you're aware, the way it works is that if you and he can sit down as clients and try to sell the matter, it's just...
that will keep anything from moving forward?
Just, just so you're aware, the way it works is that if you and he can sit down with clients and try to sell the matter, it's just as if the clock stops right now. In thirty days, or I guess twenty-one days, and then another week for the hearing, we come back, we pick up right where he is right now, and he could present the rest of his case without prejudice to his position, and you could present your case without prejudice to your position.
And does that stop the proceedings with any other, the other attorneys that are here tonight, specifically Mr. Wolf?
Does she, does that the proceedings...
I don't know why Mr. Wolf could not be at the table.
This information, I, so we have that, and then we can go back to the table.
You could, but let Mr. DeVito first talk to his client, and then see where he is, because then we have to go back to the board. I'm not a fifth, uh, fourth supervisor. It's not my intent to be a supervisor. It's my intent to try to streamline the proceedings, and if it can be settled to everyone's satisfaction, so be it. But, go ahead, Mr. DeVito, you've got five minutes.
Thank you very much.
We've got five, we've got five to seven.
Okay.
I've got ten to seven, so we'll be back at five at seven.
We're gonna put this on mute briefly, just so there's no feedback.
Seven o'clock, we are back on the record after a brief break at the request of Attorney DeVito. And can we at least tell us where everyone is and then the supervisors can decide how they want to proceed?
Sure. I had an opportunity to speak with my clients. We are willing to certainly meet good faith, meaningful conversation with Mr. Hunter or his representatives to discuss the issues that are of concern with the Preservation Society. And we will do so certainly within the timeframe that this board may allot.
And if in fact you come to some agreement, what will be your position moving forward on this particular matter?
If we can agree on the issues of concern for my client, we stand down.
Okay. What is the township's role since it's a three-party arrangement that I think we talked about in the discussion? It becomes a little difficult because obviously the township here is sitting as the supervisors are sitting as judges in the case. And for now, the judge has become a part of the negotiations, you know, it's problematic. So I'm not sure how we do that. I'm only hoping that whatever agreement, if there can be an agreement made with you and Attorney Wolf, who he's got to be careful, he's a really good lawyer, but anyone else, okay? And Mr. DeVito is too, that it will meet the township's approval. But I was just saying before while the break to the supervisor that maybe one of them should be at the table too. But it can't be now, I'm thinking about it. They can't be judges and also part of the negotiation itself, it just can't happen. So they would have to be out of the loop and hopefully whatever you agree to meets with their approval so that they can then sign off, because they do have to sign off, assuming we are changing the settlement agreement. I'm not trying to steal Mr. DeVito's thunder, buddy. If we're changing the plan, that might be different than changing the agreement, that's left for another issue.
Well, what are we doing? We changing both or changing one or the other?
Well, that will be the decision to be made if the matter proceeds.
I think we're sort of in the dark here as far as where this is going next.
All right, so is Mr. Wolf back here? And again, you're okay with what you're hearing, Mr. Wolf?
Well, as I understand it, there's going to be actually two separate stages to this settlement agreement which my client cannot afford to do. Cannot really have a say unless parties allow my client to have a say. And then there is this proceeding for my client is a party who wants to have their killing done about.
So that being said, what does the board want to do?
Well, wait a minute. What Mr. Wolf is saying is there is other, there's another side to this. I'm just wondering if that should be considered in this, in these negotiations because it's a part of this procedure.
That certainly is up to Mr. Hunter, Mr. DeVito. Again, they are not parties to the settlement agreement so that they cannot be part of that, if you will. But they are parties to this proceeding, so if you want to hear what Mr. Wolf's position is before you make a decision on this agreement, you can certainly do that. Take him out of turn, at least make a presentation without affecting Mr. DeVito and then we can decide what to do.
Because I think it's probably relevant to the larger question of the settlement agreement.
So let's do this, Mr. DeVito, with your permission. Let me hear or let us hear what Mr. Wolf's position is without taking testimony. If it looks like efforts to try to resolve this matter are going south, we just go back to your testimony and we continue on.
That's fine, that's fine, sure, thank you.
He's coming forward, thank you.
He's familiar with conditional use hearings and Zoom and stuff?
So I have entered my appearance on behalf of Shawnee Valley Owners Association, which is the owners' association responsible for a large part of Phase 1A of the development, consisting of Oakdale Village and Woodland Village, which are roughly the rest of the proposed Phase 1B across the lake, if you will. That association owns and is responsible for making Shawnee Valley Drive, which is a private road, as I'm sure most of you know, running from Hollow Drive, Hollow Road, excuse me, to Mount Nebo Road. Currently is utilized for access by residents of Wooddale and Oakland Village, Oak, excuse me, Oakdale and Woodland Villages in North Slope as well. And that traffic flows out onto Hollow Road or some of it up to Mount Nebo Road also. The proposal here, and part of the settlement agreement, as we interpreted, entails an objection to use of Lakeside Drive for a means of egress, a primary means of egress to the Phase 1B development. The impact of that, which may or may not have been considered to some folks, is that Shawnee Valley Owners Association, and particularly the 131 residents of Oakdale Village and Woodland Village now have all of that traffic coming out onto a private road that they maintain. Those folks of them can continue down into Hollow Road or onto Mount Nebo Road. So the impact to the rest of the Shawnee Valley area, as I believe Mr. Hunter alluded to, is almost a non-issue. It really is a question of how does this impact the Nob Lane area? The, again, the Preservation Society and the Township and then Shawnee Development, Inc. entered into agreement in 2009 significantly Shawnee Valley Owners Association, despite being an independent nonprofit corporation for managing those two homeowners association areas, was not a party to that agreement, was not asked to participate, was not asked for its opinion, was not involved in any discussions and did not have an opportunity to sign off on that, even though it could be probably the most impacted by that agreement, certain provisions of that agreement, specifically anything relating to Lakeside Drive. So my client is here in the context of wanting to voice its concerns about access to this proposed Phase 1B. Specifically, any suggestion that access should be restricted or limited to Shawnee Valley Drive, a private road, and how residents would be impacted by that decision. Again, my client has not been able to participate previously in these discussions. The settlement agreement was foisted upon it and came to it by some surprise years ago. And it doesn't want to see that happen again. That is why you're here tonight and expect to be part of this process going forward. Sheriff correctly indicated that we are not a party to that agreement, so we do not have a right to renegotiate that agreement if there's going to be a renegotiation. I think if there's going to be any resolution of this, the voice of Shawnee Valley Owners Association has to be heard. Whether it's part of those discussions among the parties to the settlement agreement or whether it's in reconvening these proceedings for final approval by the township, Shawnee Valley Owners Association must be involved, thank you.
Mr. Wolf, what's the road that you say you are objecting to access?
Where's that road, Lake Side Drive?
Lake Side Drive, yes, is the road that is, as I understand, proposed to run across the Sun Mountain Recreation Area, across the upper dam, and then connect into 1B and then ultimately up through and onto Shawnee Valley Drive.
But on the other side, the next Hollow Road?
Yes, from Hollow Road, yes, okay.
Robert, it's the working name that was put into the construction documents for the road we are talking about.
I think it's been referred to.
It's called Lake Side Drive, it's called Lake Side Drive.
I think we've referred to it a couple of times, mostly it's Lake Side Drive, maybe once or twice it's Lakeview Drive unless I misheard. But that's the road, I think we're all talking about the same road going across the upper dam.
All right, that's the road, I think it was in the 2007 plan, right? But it was eliminated from the 2009 settlement?
Not sure the question's directed to you, as I understand it, Mr. Hunter can express his opinion as well. That road is in the existing PRD that is being modified in the 2009 settlement agreement, which again was a, an agreement among three parties, not a public hearing in a public meeting such as this on a zoning application. There was a proposal, I believe, to remove that road. That's correct.
So you're, well, I'm not going to answer, I just want to refine the issue. So the issue here is the road access, that's why you're here.
The issue here more specifically is traffic that will be fully directed onto a private road versus having direct access to a public road when the net impact is really only to the Nob Lane area.
So, one way, you're saying right now all the traffic will go onto Shawnee Valley Drive. If Lakeview is open, as it was in the previous, 2007, then there would be two entrances, one from Hollow Road, one from Shawnee Valley Drive, right? Not eliminating any access to Shawnee Valley Drive, we're just making two.
That's correct. If the Lakeside Drive is continued into the PRD, which remains in the PRD, there are two means of egress. One directly out to Hollow Drive, Hollow Road from Phase 1B via Lakeside Drive. The other via Lakeside Drive to Shawnee Valley Drive and then out to Hollow Road or Mount Nebo Road. So my point with the impact is that if you take the road across the dam out, then all the traffic just goes onto Hollow Road by another route. So the impact is to the specific area of Nob Lane.
Do you know that if SDI or Wyndham slash SDI ever did a traffic study, an engineering study of all of this before?
Absolutely, it's required to get the high reoccupancy permit for the proposed connection to Hollow Road because Hollow Road being a state.
So there wasn't traffic study done? Or was there a traffic study done on Shawnee Valley Drive?
It just studies the impact of how many vehicles are generated by the number of homes.
I'm sorry, could you start that again?
Sure. The traffic study is determining how many, quantity of homes, townhomes, and how many trips that generates according to typical statistical models leading into the intersection of Hollow Road so that the vehicles go on Shawnee Valley Drive today.
There was never a study then of, it was before the settlement agreement was made that Lakeside Drive was eliminated going to the new development on the other side of the dam, right?
Eliminated the connection to Hollow Road and forced all traffic.
And in doing so, was there any engineering traffic study done of the impact on Shawnee Valley Drive?
It means there was nothing specifically submitted to anybody about Shawnee Valley Drive. Nothing communicated that I'm aware of to SDOA about all the vehicles generated by the new development going on to Shawnee Valley Drive.
So the answer is no. That's all I want.
If you're looking for the impact of cutting off the road, it was never presented to anybody. I think it's weird. The Lakeside Drive, I don't remember which one it is. Lakeview Drive is in the 2005 plan and the 2007 plan, it's been there for a while in the PRD plan. But also in the files, instruction documents that have been part of every permit that we've got. So environmental issues are all resolved with it. Stormwater management is all resolved with it. And it's, our PRD amendment is deleting the road, we're asking to retain it as it's been engineered, designed, and permitted through all various institutes for the last few years.
Just getting back to Mr. Wolf again, so I clear the issue then is, as you said, the amount of traffic directed to a private road as opposed to a public road.
Correct, and obviously the net effect would be a sole means of egress into the PRD.
What I'm trying to get at, it's not landscaping issue, it's not a bothering issue. It's a traffic road issue.
It's an egress issue, yes.
That's what I mean. Now that being said, okay, I'm not sure where Mr. Hunter is or where the board is, how do you want to proceed?
Can I just say something quickly? I think that a lot of, you know, it's nice that we heard that issue, but now we kind of have to leave it up to the two parties that are not the township, I think, to decide whether, you know, what role that plays in the negotiations. I mean, I would say, I just wanted to say, yeah, I think that we should get to, you know, whatever timetable the two parties can agree to now and decide. But I have Tim who wants to make a comment, so I don't know if it's.
I'm willing to go, explain if you want, but I'm. I'm from Mr. Wolf and I wish that Shawnee Valley Homeowners Association was with us in 2007 when the people that decided to pursue SDI and Seaford Township had ample opportunity to find out all of the info that was going on with it. It was a big whole loop all the way going back and it goes way back before 2007. It's not our fault or anyone else, township or anyone, that homeowners association didn't come and become involved because all those issues were well known to color in the newspaper, on the news. They had ample time to come, participate like we did, put our money where our mouth is, and put many, many hours of time into this settlement, which I'm sorry, but they weren't part of it.
Tim, at the time, I think the association itself was totally controlled by Wyndham SDI.
Not my fault.
No, it isn't. It's nothing to do with SBS. I think there's fault that lies with SDI Wyndham and also with the township for not pointing this out, but certainly not SBS.
Well, no, and so this is what I'm saying, I'm not trying to blame anyone, I'm just trying to say it's a non-issue. They weren't involved, it was nobody's fault that they weren't involved, they just weren't. They didn't have the information, they didn't come to the meeting, for whatever reason. I'm not pressing blame on anyone, that's just what happened to me.
I would respectfully say that I think it makes sense to allow, I mean, they're already party staffs in this. And I think unfortunately that's the way it has to fall. You can't really, between the people that are party to the amendment, they can decide whether or not to add people, but that's got to be approved by the court and all that stuff. I would say it makes sense to let them talk first and then, you know, let us arbitrate that. I don't think it makes sense for us to get into the weeds on any of that. I think there is a point that there's a modern issue that the people that live there now care about it, but I don't think we can get into that until we hear back from the two parties.
I agree.
The question becomes, are we putting this over to another day or not? It's a simple question, it's really not complicated.
I think we have to.
Putting it over to allow SBS and the applicant to see if they can solve it. If they do, SBS is now out of the loop and it's only Mr. Wolf that's in the loop unless you can reach the agreement with him and any other party people who believe that they have not been properly taken care of.
Go ahead. The 22nd or 23rd, you want to try?
I have one thing I think I want to ask Mr. Wolf with respect to the concern you raised from the other direction caller from SDOA.
You can't hear that yet, there's other people talking, I can't hear you.
I was asking Mr. Wolf how many single-family homes are in the SDOA and approximately how many townhomes are in the community there? The Shawnee Valley Drive, it would be affected by the new development all floating on Shawnee Valley Drive.
Well, as I understand, the existing homes within the Shawnee Valley Owners Association are 131 and two unbilled lots, I believe. The, as to.
How many in North Slope 3 are there? Man, man. Hi. There's 240 townhomes in North Slope 3, which also go for Shawnee Valley Drive.
Thank you.
I think the other figure significant is just Shawnee Valley Drive. I think there are about 60 family homes on Shawnee Valley Drive.
Robert, a moment, can we get your name, please?
Ruby Donnelly.
Do you need that spelled?
Yeah, please. D O N N E L L Y. Wolf is representing SDOA, I am the board president for SDOA Homes.
Now that that's out of the way, we have to have a reasonable agreement to determine when the next meeting date for this will be. That's, there's no way this is going to get resolved tonight between the both parties. I think we have to afford them both time to consider what they want to do.
I would recommend, and again, you are the board, not me, Mr. Chair, give 30 days. Enough time for them to sit down, try to sit down, resolve the matter. And if not, say tonight, the next hearing is going to be March 9 at 6:00 PM. And if it's settled, fine, then we only have a half a hearing. Or if it's all settled, we have no hearing. Or if it's not settled, we have, just complete the rest of the hearing and be done with it. But I would not go much longer than that, in deference to Mr. Hunter.
I'll have March 9th at 6:00 PM, a continuation of what we're doing today. I think that gives both parties enough time, but I would defer to their counsel.
Before, yeah, I had something, Mr. Chair, Mr. Wolf was going to say.
Just something briefly, I'll go sit down. Responsive to Mr. Carbone's comment of what's happened in the past, I extended a request and an offer to participate at some level in discussions between Mr. Hunter and SBS. So if that's the wrong of the past, I suggest we don't repeat that mistake. Now, I haven't a response on that, I don't need to, if you want to spot, but that request is out there. So I would ask if you consider that.
And I think that's understood and I don't know if anyone's prepared to respond this evening, but you're here, you're making that request, and I think that hopefully it'll be considered.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
That's okay, I was just going to suggest March 9th. I think that, yeah, 30 days should be sufficient at 6:00 PM. It seems like we're still able to make it both in person and on Zoom. Does that work for the parties in this case?
It works, for SBS, March 9th works. I have a question. Is there anything that the supervisors are posing upon the parties to accomplish to.
I would like to, I think the supervisors would like to see if the matter could be settled, at least with the Preservation Society. So they're out of the loop. If you can also somehow accommodate the requests of or concerns of Mr. Wolf and the Owners Association, okay, then that may well resolve the entire case. But if we get half of it settled, that's much less, that has to be controverted, that much less it has to be ruminated, consumed, absorbed, and then a decision made.
Brian, does March 9th work for you at 6:00? Our regular meeting is at 4 that day anyway, just like today.
Yes, no problem with me, I just had a question. I'm concerned, again, during my due diligence, I'm seeing my name signed to a lot of different documents, agreeing to the court order and court settlement. And I think that sadly, I think Ron expressed it perfectly, this is a screwed up thing. It's not just two parties, it's the three parties. And all three parties have to be on the same page or we go to a court injunction. I don't know, number one, I don't even know why the hell we're here. To tell you the truth, it should have been, it should have been agreed that these two parties sat down and maybe, just maybe, Ron, I may be wrong, one of our supervisors, I would volunteer to be that supervisor as I've been involved with this for many years and my signature's on quite a few of these court documents.
I would say, Brian, this is Ron speaking, that if you are a part of the discussions regarding settlement, then I think you need to recuse yourself from voting on the project if it doesn't settle. I think that's what you would have to do.
Well, then if I, then myself and Robert, you're saying?
No, no, just you. If you want to sit in and listen to what is going on and become part of the negotiation process, then I don't think you can then vote on the project if in fact it doesn't get settled and then the matter proceeds to a contested hearing.
And what's the alternative, Ron?
But I don't see what other choice you have. I've never seen a judge go with the parties in the back room to try to settle the case and then come out and try to survive the case. It doesn't happen all the time.
Well, again, as I've said, gentlemen, please, there's three parties, three parties involved. And we put ourselves possibly by allowing this hearing to take ourselves out of it.
We don't have a choice.
And I say that, I don't know if, I don't know, I'm long distance from SBS. Robert, I think should be careful, as a just recently resigned member. I had to recuse myself.
I believe we're making this all more complicated than it needs to be. We simply want to determine if two parties in the proceeding can settle their differences. If not, we come back and continue the hearing. If they do, we come back and continue the hearing with whatever issues are left.
And Ron, I say this, this is the first instance I know that Attorney Wolf is represent, I didn't know he was involved. And he's asking to be a party to the negotiations, but that's all, I guess if they allow that. I just don't know.
He was here at the last hearing, he was here at the last hearing and was given the party status because he was in the back, you may not have heard that at the last hearing, but he was here.
Okay. And it represents, can I ask who engaged the services?
Who engaged what service?
The Shawnee Valley Owners Association.
Shawnee Valley Owners Association.
I think that would be a violation of attorney-client privilege. No, he's just asking simply who hired.
Well, he just answered it. The law has to know is who the heck is the Shawnee Valley?
Yeah, it's, Brian, it's Oakdale and Woodland Village, if I'm.
Do they have a board? Do they have a board?
Mr. Wolf, you can come up and answer that.
Attorney Wolf, I'm just asking simply who engaged your services?
Can you hear me, Mr. Barrett?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear before. I'm representing the Shawnee Valley Owners Association, Inc., which is the association which manages the Woodland Village and, I can't remember those.
And all I say is that they have a board of directors, is that correct?
They do, and their president is here, Ms. Donnelly, who spoke a few moments ago. And I've been engaged to appear on their behalf. I represent the board of supervi, excuse me, the board of Shawnee Valley Owners Association and have for approximately two years, so not just in this proceeding.
Okay, thank you very much.
That said, I understand Brian's concern, I don't want the township out of the loop either, but I think that it's clear we have to, we have to be the last people to talk when this happens. Correct, Ron?
I don't know how we do that because we're sitting at a hearing. Remember, the last settlement agreement was done without any hearing. It was done by way of a meeting, if you will. And that's how the settlement agreement was done in 2009. We were not part of the agreement in 2010 or 2011, the First Amendment, Second Amendment. We did, we were part of the motion that was presented to the court to approve Amendments 1 and 2, and I signed off on that. But there was no hearing, this becomes problematic. But I would leave that for another day. Let's see if two parties here can resolve their differences.
So it is March 9th, 6:00 PM, that works for Mr. DeVito, that works for the Preservation Society. Mr. Hunter, you've indicated that works for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I would not impose any conditions on that. I think that we have to, you know.
Engage in free and open communication, then you know. Hope for the best.
Right.
Hope for the best, and if it doesn't work out, we come back here, we just start again.
That said, would I hear a motion to that effect so we can address the other issues at the next hearing?
Make the motion.
Motion, Mr. Bovetan, do I hear a second? Oh, second, the motion, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we will reconvene this hearing, March 9th at 6:00 PM, and we will leave it to the Shawnee Preservation Society and Mr. Hunter to negotiate.
Or their counsel to contact the supervisors, or the township as to what, what occurred.
Right.
Okay. Can I keep the motion?
If there's nothing else, can you hear, I entertain a motion to adjourn, if you want, but we have to close the hearing.
No, 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 we, we leave open the hearing, that way we don't have to make a decision in 45 minutes. Okay.
And everyone should be aware, I want to make sure that everyone is aware of the fact that if you, if you want to provide public comments, when we come here again on 9th, even if half the case is settled, or the whole case is settled, you will be given an opportunity to provide your public comments, you're not going to be stifled in that regard.
All right, that said, Mr. Love and I made a motion to adjourn.
Is it, is it too late for, for a question from one of the owners?
I would, I would like to second the motion to adjourn.
Yeah, the, the motion to adjourn is, is, is non-debatable, so all in favor of, of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And sir, with the, the question, if you want to contact the township board, if you're still with us, you could ask now, quickly, but we're gonna.
Well, okay, so this is Tom Anderson, and I'm Ted's partner.
Tom Anderson.
I just, I just want to understand, it's, it's a tri-party agreement, Ted and I brought the three parties together when we, we couldn't bring SPS to talk with us, so we went this route to bring the three parties together. If we don't, if we don't get anywhere with SPS, because we haven't, what, what is our, what is our step after that?
All right, let me, let me say this, I would respectfully say that you should consider asking council that question, not, not the township's council, we, we can address that after that meeting.
I, I would just say that if the matter cannot be resolved come the 9th, we continue with the hearing. Why? John, the Preservation Society filed suit against Smithfield Township and developer SDI.
Right, okay, but all this has to end now, because we adjourned the meeting, so we're going to keep in compliance with the sunshine law, so I will.
I'm sorry, look, Tom Anderson, did you just say that you're bringing suit against Smithfield Township and SPS?
No, he didn't. I, I did not hear him say that.
No, no, Brian, no, Brian, I didn't say that.
Okay.
I, I, I would expect that you wouldn't, I'm sorry, hey, the Zoom sucks, you know?
All right, that said, we're gonna hang up the call for the night, but thank you all for coming.